Select Board meeting for Tuesday, January 2, 2024 to order. And as required by open meeting law, you're hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, I'd ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also want to point out that at the end of our meeting, we'll be going into executive session, so we'll read that at the end of our meeting. That's appropriate, right, Joe? We can read it at the end?
Yep.
Okay, so anybody for public comments and announcements? After Jeff, do you want to say anything about your meetings?
I would, thank you, Madam Chair. I will be setting the January and February office hour meeting schedule as soon as I can get with Cara at the 2:04. And I would also like to announce that, seeing as the past office hours have gone, in my opinion, very well, it's given the town and the people here in Harwich a comfortable and safe place to be heard and come in and just talk and speak their minds to myself and Mary Anderson when she was here, and now Michael McCaskill has kindly jumped in. But I'd also now like to announce that I will be adding some more specific targeted groups for me and selectman McCaskill, if he cares to continue to join, for us to listen to. And the groups that I've chosen at this point so far would be hospitality, so that would be restaurant, bar, and like-kind businesses. Another subcategory would be small businesses. Another subcategory would be older population, the older population. I'm going to talk to a few people at the Council on Aging. I've already talked to Cindy Williams, and she's going to be very helpful getting the word out to the small businesses who are part of the chamber. And then even potentially, I'm thinking about listening to parents of kids in the school system. So that's something I think you all can look forward to coming up in 2024 in what I call the Listening Tour. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. And otherwise, under Public Comments and Announcements, our next Select Board meeting will be Monday, January 8, 2024, depending on what we have on that agenda. And I am just going to take a minute. We received this card, a thank-you card, which is nice to get, to all Board members to say, dear all, this little note contains a huge thanks and appreciation for the Harwich Preschool Family Support Grant that we received, and that is making a tremendous difference and an impact for our family, for our and so many families in Harwich. Thank you, and best wishes for the holiday season. And it's signed by Tim Leslie, Ola, and Lilly Clark. So that was really nice to hear, and we've gotten positive feedback on that, so I just wanted to share that. Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
Hi, Elizabeth Harder, Harwich delegate to the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates. To anybody who's watching or hears about this, we'd really like to have a Harwich citizen on the Barnstable County Human Rights Advisory Council. It does wonderful work, and it would be really helpful. Each town has a representative, and it would be really nice if Harwich could have someone on that council. So if you're interested, contact the county, or you can contact me, elizabeth.harder@capecod.gov. Thanks.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anybody else for a public comment and announcement?
Hi, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director, and I just wanted to run through some of the January events at the community center. On Thursday, January 11, at 5:30, we're doing an adult comedy improv in conjunction with Cape Cod Theater Company, Harwich Junior Theater.
That's powerful.
On Friday, January 12, we're going to try a free Zumba class. It's open to anyone. If it's something you wanted to try, please stop in, 5:30 to 6:30. It's for ages 13 and above at the request of the instructors. Also, on January 12, at 6:30, we are having our Cape Cod Military Talk. We do one every month. This one's topic is the use of animals in World War I. Then I'll take your names a little later, because I know you're going to want this. The Community Talent Show Auditions will be on January 16. So we are going to be running, having, hosting a talent show for the entire community, families, kids, adults. Do you want me to take some names now? I'm seeing it. Then we're going to do the Family Clue Murder Mystery on January 19. We had done this before, and people asked if we would bring it back, so we are happy to redo that and have quite a few people. We're doing two different time slots, one at 5:00 and one at 6:30. So you can sign up for that. Then we're going to do a Game Night on January 24, and it's for, it's family-friendly, sorry, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then the Talent Show, January 26 at 5:30. And there are prizes to be given out, and we are looking for judges, so. And also, I just wanted to point out, our newsletter is ready, and you can get it on our website. You can also ask, and we will email you a copy, but there are hard copies around town. In addition to, we always have these flyers, but we have a single sheet that you can just scan, and it will give you all the information on the events that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, that's a lot. Anybody else for public comment and announcement? Okay, hearing nobody. Can we move to the consent agenda, Jeff?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes for December 4, 2023, December 11, 2023, December 18, 2023. And we vote to approve the Assistant Town Manager's recommendation to grant permission by Verizon New England Incorporated and N-Star Electric DBA EverSource Energy to place a new jointly-owned pole, 106/13.5 at number 1522, Orleans Harwich Road, Route 39, Harwich, Mass.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
4-0. So we're not going to be having a public hearing this evening on the Cranberry Valley Golf Course rates and fee adjustments, because the public hearing has been scheduled for the 8th of January. So we're going to just have a discussion, and then we will follow back up after they've had the public hearing. And Roman is on vacation as well, so we'll follow up. But let me just open that up to board discussion. Anybody want to start? I mean, I looked at the fees, I didn't really have any comments. I had questions, but...
Yeah, I mean, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yeah, sure.
I looked through the work, and coming from another golf course and being the board, the chairman of the board of the golf committee and being on the board of the golf course, I think what our employees did here was a heck of a job. I think that they thought things through. I do have a couple of questions for them when they're here. But all in all, I feel this was well put together, and it makes a lot of sense. So that's all I would say before we get into the public meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. Michael?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, too. I liked the new program, the greens fees and current fees, just had questions on that. Any comments? Joe, you have anything that you want to add before we move on?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Great. Under New Business...
I move that we approve a 2024 annual inholders license renewal for Harwich Port Seafarer, Inc., DBA Moon Custer's Tavern, 86 Sisson Road. I move that we approve a 2024 common vicular's license renewal for the Stop &amp; Shop supermarket company LLC DBA Starbucks at Stop &amp; Shop, number 475 on 111 Chatham Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
We're not going to go on, will we?
Well, I think we're going to have some discussion on this next one.
Okay, good.
Yep, so...
May I add D in there?
Yeah.
Is that all right if I add D in there?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I will add to that motion that we approve a temporary closure of Ember Pizza from January 2, 2024 through January 28, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded for A, B, and D. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll go to C.
Well, I'm not moving anything, so...
No, right. No, so...
Move that we discuss.
Right, so this is a discussion on the resolution supporting the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce Destination Marketing District, just so the public understands that's what we're talking about next.
For the record, my name is Paul Neswicky. I am the CEO of the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, and thank you for hearing us tonight. We'd like to talk to you a little bit about the Cape Cod Tourism Destination Marketing District. I think we have a slideshow. Well...
We have one in our packet.
We can, yeah, we have it in the package, we can get through this. So the Tourism Destination Marketing District, it's a dedicated and stable source of funding, designed to strategically increase the competitiveness of tourism destinations. It's a small assessment on lodging that generates funds that are reinvested directly to benefit the businesses and the communities in that district. So, you know, across the country, these are known as Tourism Improvement Districts. They're actually created on a business improvement district model. So this TDMD, as it's known in Massachusetts, was authorized by the state legislature in the spring of 2021 in an economic development bond bill, economic development bill that they did. It is based on the Business Improvement District model. It's approved and governed by those that are paying the assessment, and it's only hotels and motels that would be self-assessing or looking for the opportunity to self-assess. It captures existing tourism activity and reinvests that back into the community. Unlike beds taxes or other surtaxes, there has to be a direct benefit return to those that are making, that are paying the self-assessment. The funds can only be used for plan-approved incentives and activities, and there's a five-year term on the district, after which time it would have to be reauthorized. There is a map in your packet that shows you across the country, states that have adopted Tourism Improvement Districts, and you'll see a majority of the country either has active TIDs or are considering them. And just to talk about some of the economic impact of Tourism Improvement Districts, on average, in these 201 that have been adopted nationwide, there's a 2.1% lift in hotel room demand, but there's a 4.5% lift in hotel room revenue that's been associated with it. So where they've been implemented, they really do drive economic impact. When we look at why Cape Cod needs a TDMD, a Cape Cod Tourism Destination Marketing District has the potential to grow the local economy in a way that other excise and surtaxes do not. This growth pays dividends that support regional community development as well as infrastructure needs. So on the Cape specifically, why do we need a TDMD? Well, the Cape Cod lodging businesses, we've been meeting with since January of last year now, and they want to self-assess. They want the ability to put that money back into their businesses. Existing lodging properties are at risk due to the lack of investment, workforce housing, and primarily the increased competition from short-term rentals and the pressure that that's putting, the market share that they're losing to short-term rentals. Additionally, state funding for tourism promotion in Massachusetts has always been both unreliable and insufficient. If you look at other competing states like Rhode Island, Maine, New York, they put a lot more money into marketing their destinations than the Commonwealth has historically, and it's one of the first areas to get cut when there are the ebbs and flows of the state budget for reality. It also leverages existing lodging capacity to grow the commercial tax base without, we're not talking about building new hotels or adding new rooms. We're just talking about getting more people here when some of those rooms are empty to smooth that transition. And also, targeted promotions can help smooth those seasonal swings and support a more sustainable tourism pattern, which benefits the communities at large. In Harwich in particular, there are six qualifying hotels, based on the plan that's been developed through the Steering Committee, so those are hotels and motels that have 15 or more rooms. So there are six qualifying. Currently, the cumulative lodging tax in Harwich is 14.45%. So with the addition of a 1.5% TDMD, the cumulative rate would still be under 16%. There are national studies that will show you that as long as you're under 20%, there's really no measurable impact on demand. Just to point out two of the areas, two case studies, one is Boston and Cambridge. Boston and Cambridge were the first two communities that got together after the legislature passed this to put in place a TDMD. And that TDMD in Boston and Cambridge will generate over $30 million. It generated, just in the first year of it, almost 23. So if you see the Army-Navy game, or if you watch Celtics games and you see that Meet Boston logo, that's all TDMD money from Boston and Cambridge. That's been generating that activity. We are already starting to feel the pull of some of our international travelers to Boston because of the investment that they're making in recruiting international visitors. The other case study that I would point to, and I believe this is the latest one that's been adopted nationally, is in Providence, Rhode Island. Providence, in December of 2022, formed their TID, and it's a 2% assessment on the lodging properties with 50 or more rooms, and it's estimated to generate $1.6 million that they're going to put back into convention trade and sports tourism marketing, international marketing and PR, incentives and strategic business support. So this will be the second one in Rhode Island. Newport, Rhode Island, has just reauthorized their Tourism Improvement District after five years, and Newport's a major competitor of ours. So we put together a Steering Committee made up of seven hoteliers that helped us put together the Cape Cod TDMD plan. And so if we want to look at where the funds will go, 60% of the total funds collected would go to sales, marketing, destination development, and special offense. 25% would go to workforce and business development initiatives, and 15% would be held for reserves and administrative purposes. So if we look at sales, marketing, and special events, for example, one of our most serious threats to the economy on the Cape right now are the bridges. You know, there's good news and bad news before Christmas. Good news is it looks like we will be having the replacement of the Sagamore Bridge funded by the federal government. Bad news is, when that happens, if we don't manage it correctly with, through public relations outreach, we could create an economic dislocation of people that don't want to come to the Cape, fearful of the traffic situation they would face with the bridge replacement project. But the reality is the bridge replacement process will have a negligible impact on traffic compared to the maintenance that happens on both of those bridges every year. That maintenance, those single-lane restrictions cause significant traffic impacts and economic impacts. The replacement bridges will be built along the side of the existing bridges, so they won't have it. But we need the opportunity to have a funded public relations campaign that makes sure people know that the Cape Cod is still open for business during what is projected to be a seven-to-10-year build of that new, of those new replacement bridges. We can also work with our local chambers to sponsor signature community events, put money directly back into community development. So from the fund, we would be providing $10,000 plus $10,000, $10 a room through local chambers. For a town like Harwich, that's over $12,000 annually from here that comes directly back to support our local partners in the local chambers. There are also incentives for increases in hotel business. Boston does this in January through the TDMD. They give money back to hotels so that the hotels can provide $150 parking voucher if you stay in January, for example. So it's all about maximizing the infrastructure that we have. As it relates to workforce and business development, the J-1 Housing Program, J-1s have supported our seasonal economy for decades now. In 2018, we had 5,000 J-1 students that were here that obviously crashed during the pandemic. And we rebounded in 22 to 2100 J-1 students. We were at 2900 last year. But this is still 2,000, 2,500-person hole in the seasonal workforce economy. That's why we see a lot of restaurants that are changing, that can't get the labor supply to remain open the hours and the days that they have been in the past. And other workforce housing initiatives, we see, there's a lot of private sector activity out there now, looking to convert outdated hotel or motel properties around the Cape. And we see a lot of the larger hospitality groups actually buying some of these smaller hotels. Three of the three hotels in Orleans have been purchased by larger hotels that are not in Orleans, just to hire their workforce. But the larger hotels can afford to do that, the smaller hotels cannot. So if we look at how the district is going to be managed, we have a seven hotelier Steering Committee right now. That will become the TDMD Committee if the district is adopted. And of the seven, four of those members will sit on the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, so that we have that overlap in governance. And then the Cape Cod Chamber, who is the Regional Tourism Council for Barnstable County, will oversee all of the administration and the financial accounting and the return on investment justifications that have to be done for the district. So as I mentioned, in January, we started the process, and then we worked with our Steering Committee to create the plan. We're in the process now of looking for town resolutions, so asking the towns, and really the vote from the town in adopting the resolution is just to create the district, to give the hotels in your town the opportunity to petition to form it. But the district will not be formed until 62% of the hotel motel properties that are impacted have petitioned affirmatively that they want to create the district. Once we have the district created, the district has to be referenced in that petition, which is why the towns have to go first. Then we'll go out and get the signatures on the petition. And once the petition is signed, we'll file the paperwork, and then we're off and running on the district until it's time to renew in five years. So that's why we are at our next step, talking to Select Boards about the resolution, the authorization of the district. We're looking to have a resolution pass in all 15 towns. It will make the, I think, the impact of the TDMD and the administration a lot easier to have all the towns participating, although that's not necessary. So with that, I think I've covered what's in the presentation in front of you, and I am available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Paul. Questions from Board members? Michael?
I don't have any questions.
Jeff?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Don?
For the benefit of the public, Paul, since they didn't get to see the presentation, you just mentioned in passing that there were six eligible properties in Harwich. Could you just identify them publicly?
We've been working really closely with Cindy on the six hotels.
So as Paul mentioned, we have six that can participate. A Beach Breeze Inn, now I'm going to have to look at my flip chart that's not with me. Beach Breeze Inn, Handkerchief Shoals, Inn on the Beach, Winstead, Waquasit, Pelamon Earle. We held a meeting at the Harwich Chamber with Lauren Barker from the Cape Cod Chamber with the hotels that are able to do this, so that they would understand what was going on and what the process is. All that attended were A Beach Breeze Inn, Winstead, Pelamon Earle, Inn Waquasit, all said yes that they would like to self-assess.
Right, thank you, Cindy.
That was five.
That was four. I counted on my hand.
At this time, it was five, so what are the missing...
Handkerchief Shoals was not available. I still have not heard from them. But we did have the percentage that we needed to.
Is there another one?
A Beach Breeze Inn.
Yeah.
Inn on the Beach, Peter's behind me. Winstead, Witchmere, and Waquasit, Pelamon Earle.
And Witchmere is not part of this?
No. Oh my God, you're messing me up now, Don.
It's Handkerchief Shoals, there's six, one didn't attend.
I'm totally confused, so don't feel left out.
I was all good before that.
You said five, and then you said Handkerchief Shoals didn't attend, right?
Four attended.
Thank you. Who am I forgetting?
Waquasit, Handkerchief Shoals, Inn on the Beach, Winstead, and Pelamon Earle and A Beach Breeze.
Yep, so I've mentioned them all. The ones that weren't at our meeting were just Handkerchief and Inn on the Beach, but Peter's here with some questions, probably. But the ones that did, the four out of the six, all said yes, they would like to self-assess. So that's why we're here tonight.
Any other questions, Don?
Was Witchmere contacted, or...
Witchmere is not one of, so due to the state legislature, they have to fall under certain criteria, and please jump in, Paul, if I mess this up, but they have to have 15 rooms, and that's how they get to first start. And they have to be designated as a hotel, not an inn or a bed and breakfast. Some of ours did fall just shy because they were known as a lodging house. The turn-in has 18 rooms, but because of how they're recognized, they can't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Michael?
I move that we approve a resolution supporting the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce's proposal to create a Tourism Destination Marketing District.
You can come up, and did you have comments?
May I, please?
Sure.
Second on the motion for discussion?
Yeah, second.
Second for discussion.
Oh, so now you're up.
Now you're up. Now you can speak.
We're not voting.
We haven't voted it.
I got you, thank you. So Peter Macri Inn on the Beach, and I'm glad Mr. Paul is here. So apologies, you were probably, when the local chamber met, I wasn't able to attend, and so I've had a series of questions. I tried to meet with Cindy to answer some of them, which she did, and was quite helpful. But I just want to articulate, and maybe this is beneficial for the Board to hear, some of my thoughts in terms of the TDMD and reservations as well, because, you know, there are some potential negatives to this, as I see. So if I look at our business in particular, we're ostensibly, we're open from May 1st, call it, to the end of October. And so when we're trying to benefit the business overall, you're talking about the shoulder season. I somewhat put aside the spring, because the spring around here is wet and nasty, and it's pretty slow to come about. We can't open our beach up really until, you know, close to the July 4 holiday. We do benefit in the spring from June weddings, so weekends for us are pretty much full. It's really those, you know, midweek rooms that you're trying to fill. And then in the fall, the opportunity similarly is weekdays during September, and then you get a mix of some weekend availability and some weekday availability in October. So we're talking here about applying, you say, you know, just a 1.5% on top of 14.5%. But from my perspective, there is a lot of sensitivity that guests are beginning to have with all these taxes being geared on. They don't see that as just, you know, okay, that's the tax part. If somebody has a complaint or an issue, they're sure to say, you know, I'm paying $X hundred for my room, and boy, I didn't even get satisfied with this or whatnot. So there is a sensitivity to that. The 1.5% could be detrimental to our overall RevPAR, so that's your occupancy times your overall revenue potential, if people perceive that rates are just overall getting too high. So on balance, we're trying to figure out, is, from a marketing investment standpoint, is it worthwhile for us to be contributing and participating in this general pool where we don't necessarily have line of sight toward what happens to our investment? Once it goes into this generalized pool, it then gets managed by the Cape Cod Chamber and then the Steering Committee. I don't know who the seven committee members are, but I'm told that, I don't believe that there is Harwich representation, is there?
Yes, Harwich is represented. Waquasit, Pelamon Earle.
Okay, so there's, so we have large business representation, but I don't know if we have, do we have small business representation?
Pelamon Earle is part of...
Pelamon Earle is part of Pelamon, so that's pretty much large business. So the concern on my part is that we need to have small business representation in terms of how the dollars investments are directed. Our economic challenges are very much different. If we're looking to benefit, extend our seasons, hire workforce in the off-season, and extend our season beyond October, well, the investments I need are probably different from what Waquasit needs or Pelamon needs. We need investment in infrastructure to be able to... We need investment in infrastructure to be able to, you know, to be able to winterize the rooms, to be able to take advantage of these dollars. So I'd like to see that the decision is made with sort of a full perspective and understanding of the perspectives that are out there. It's my understanding that you have tentative buy-in from four of the six, but the definitive buy-in, am I correct, comes later? Yeah. So then a question is this, is that once you are in or it's been approved, the TDMD, can you opt out?
Yeah. Can you go to the mic so everybody knows?
I'll tell you what, I'll ask my questions and then...
Thank you.
Give it back over to Paul.
Perfect.
So can you opt out would be a question. And then if it is approved, is the one and a half percent only on the six participating hotels, motels, or is it on all of the lodging businesses? In other words, are we only necessary for the 62% approval? Or are we in fact both the approvers as well as the sole contributors to the pool? Is that a clear question?
Yeah, no, I get the question.
So I do want to understand that. Again, the committee structure, I'd love to understand more in terms of how to weigh in and provide input and influence some of the decisions, economic decisions made at the committee level. I'm a little unclear how the dollars will flow to the local chamber. Paul did outline it. But then once it is attributed to the local chamber, again, the ability to have line of sight and direct some of the decision-making toward how those monies are invested would be helpful. So those are my perspectives. And, you know, Paul, if you could address them, that would be helpful. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, those are great questions. So let me, the business improvement district model would be, so if 62% of the hotels sign the petition affirmatively creating the district, then that one and a half percent does apply to all of the hotels. There are 165 properties Cape-wide, six of them in the town of Harwich. I think that answers that question. But some really good points have been raised by seasonal properties. We have small properties that are seasonal, that have the same sort of clientele, pretty much coming back every year. And I think they see if we're just promoting sort of year-round things on the Cape, that they don't necessarily benefit from that. So one of the things that I would be open to, because I think this gets right to Peter's point, is expanding the steering committee from seven to include a seasonal representation because I think that is a missing piece on the steering committee as part of the oversight. And I do think that there are, there's a lot more flexibility with this money that's not related, that we don't have the same flexibility with the state funds that we get on an annual basis. So we could use them for, to help the seasonal properties take better advantage of it. So I think that's an excellent point and an adjustment that I think we will make.
Thank you, Paul. Sure, yep, just come up to the mic and identify yourself again.
Peter McRee, again, owner of In on the Beach. You said that if the six approve, we have, I don't know how many lodging businesses in town, 20, 30? No, no. Six qualifying, only applies to the six. So those are the only six that will be paying and contributing.
Correct.
But the others will be generally benefiting.
Potentially. But another good question, because we have to demonstrate a return on investment to those properties that are paying. So there does have to be a specific benefit to the particular properties that are self-assessing. So that's why a fair amount of the resources go back in direct incentives that those hotels can then turn around and provide to their patrons. Now, if we're doing sort of things like PR on the bridges, there's probably an ancillary impact, positive impact, I would say, for the general economy on the Cape and for individual businesses, but also on the workforce housing piece, I think, where we would be specifically prioritizing those hotels and motels that are self-assessing. Does that...
So actually, just to follow up on, I just had a couple of questions myself while we're talking about it. And when you talk about funds, maybe the funds will be spent to directly benefit the payees. Is part of that, you know, going to be, as you close out a year, and I know this is all new and it's a five-year plan, but will there be an annual report to explain how those monies benefited those businesses across the Cape? And then the ancillary benefits to those others as well?
Yeah, there'll be an annual report that we'll send back to the properties that are self-assessing and include them in anticipation of developing the next year's budget. So there'll be an opportunity to participate through the TDMD Steering Committee.
Okay, great. And I suppose the, any improvements on the J1s help everybody because there's really no way to pinpoint?
Well, no, we know exactly the sponsoring, where the J1s are when they're here. Now, they're only supposed to work one job. I mean, they may work more than that, and that might have an ancillary benefit too. But we know where they're coming and who they're working for.
Great. Jeff?
Yeah, just one quick question. Thank you for being here and presenting. Can you clarify, five-year term, and then that next line which says can be dissolved at any time?
Yeah. No, the district can be dissolved at any time.
What would it take to dissolve the district?
A similar process it takes to create it. So you'd have to have, I think that the reverse process would start with a petition that you had more than 62% of the impacted hotels sign in order to start that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Don, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. It's not a question for Paul. We did get an email from Waquasit, and I kind of wish it had been in the packet because I wanted to address some stuff. My reservation about the whole thing is that we're not doing anything to address the competitive imbalance with Airbnb's verbal situation where they don't have to obtain licenses, they don't have to get inspections largely. And they will tangentially benefit from the money that goes in, but I'm not sure that they're carrying the same kind of burden that the hotels are. And that's worried me for quite some time. Traditional hotels, I mean, some cities have actually terminated their ability to operate in general. And I might point out that most of these, you know, Airbnbs are in residential zones, and the hotels you're talking about absolutely have to be zoned for what they're at.
They are. And the Cape has 18,000 short-term rentals now. We have more than New York City. And those short-term rentals are single-family homes for the most part. They're in neighborhoods, they're in communities, they're impacting wastewater more than hotels and motels are. The hotels and motels are the traditional industry on the Cape that really helped us build a tourism industry on the backs of the middle class. And we want to preserve that. And so the hoteliers that we've talked to want this money because they think it makes them more competitive with short-term rentals. And they need that because they are losing market share as we see. And there is a sense out there that the Cape is becoming less and less affordable from a hospitality perspective. But if you look at the increase, the average daily rates from short-term rentals compared to hotel motels, hotel motels are still your best value for the middle-class people that want to come here and make memories on the Cape.
Thank you, Paul.
I will take note that the email from Waquasit ended with urging us to support this. It wasn't that they were railing against that one thing, but they did mention it.
Cindy?
You mentioned emails. You also should have received an email. It would not have been in your packet because Alton, as you mentioned, Mr. Howell, was not able to be here. Either was Brant from A Beach Breeze Inn. You should have gotten that email also today. Do you need me to just read any of it? Okay. "We're writing to express our support for the proposed tourism destination and marketing district. We have owned and operated A Beach Breeze Inn in West Harwich since 2002. We have put an emphasis on providing clean, affordable accommodations for families, many repeat guests and those that are staying with us for the first time. Since we strive to maintain affordable rates, we are initially somewhat reluctant to support the TDMD. After digging a little deeper and meeting with representatives from Harwich and the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, we now understand just how necessary it is. One of the most compelling pieces of information for us was hearing that many other tourism destinations in New England and beyond have already established TDMDs. We feel that establishing a TDMD here will help us stay on a level playing field with those other markets. Another plus is the access of funds that will help stretch out these shoulder seasons." I should have brought water to drink tonight. "We're very fortunate to enjoy great occupancy numbers during the summer months, but bringing folks to our area during the shoulder seasons," this is like tongue tip, "would be a game-changer. The TDMD will allow more events that will draw people and would help small properties like ours to offer other desirable vacation packages, which could also help bring people in during slower months. Thank you for your consideration." I brought that up because they are a small property, and we met with all of them. And we wouldn't be here tonight if they didn't want to self-assess. So I'm just going to leave it at that.
No, thank you, Cindy. And I think, you know, the point that Don raises about Airbnbs is a good one, and it continues to be a debate across the Cape. And how do they, you know, get regulated? And is there zoning changes? I mean, but that's a broader discussion, and they're impacting you now. So if this is going to help, I think it's a positive move. And so we have a motion and a second. And if there's no further discussion...
Who was the second?
Julie seconded.
I made it.
I'll second.
No, that's fine. I'll second. I made the second. So if there's no further discussion, I'd ask, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Thank you.
There are documents in your signature package that you can sign and then circulate for the clerk.
It's just with the chair, right?
Chair, correct.
Now we'll go on to old business and the discussion on the intermunicipal agreement with Cape Cod Regional Technical High School for the Bog at 374 Main Street. And I just want to make a comment about thanking Michael again for all his input and work on this and hopes of long haul, but it looks like we're there.
Thank you, Julie.
So does anyone have any discussion, any questions on this? Or are we good to?
I guess I would just, a few thank yous. Starting with the person that brought this forward, Leo Kokounis, who could not be here tonight. But Leo Kokounis, this would not have happened without his bringing this forward. Bob Sandborn from the Tech School with his pushing for this as well, and many, many, many other people. But finally, the Conservation Commission that stayed very patient through this whole thing and then wrote a nice letter of support. But the last meeting we had, I thought, went very well, and there was a lot of very positive comments. A few questions came out of it, none that they felt they needed answers to, but things that we're still going to clarify. So moving this forward tonight, the school has already voted to allow Bob Sandborn to execute the document so we could get started. There's a tremendous amount of work to do between now and it actually happens, but this will certainly get the ball rolling.
Right. Thank you, Michael. Any, Don?
Yeah, Michael knows I'm usually supportive of this also through the years. It really achieves one thing that we've wanted to, and thank you to the Conservation Commission for recognizing that. It preserves that property as something that's going to actually advance agriculture in the future. It would have been a real shame to see that go away.
Thank you, Don. Jeff, you have anything?
Just thank you to Michael and all involved.
Great, thanks. So we, you don't need anything?
I think a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four oh. Under Old Business B, discussion regarding a human resource position to be added by vote at annual town meeting May 2024, and we have the description in our packet. I don't know if there's any questions. We talked about the fact that, you know, this may morph into a different position over time, but that would be something to discuss in the future. I think right now we have an appreciation for needing an HR person and streamlining, onboarding, benefits, et cetera. So is there any discussion by board members on the item? Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It does make clear upfront the line of authority, and it actually is a lot better and cleaner than what it started out with. It works in collaboration with us through the town administrators. So as a start, this is really much better.
Jeff?
I support this.
Michael?
Just on that collaboration piece, in reading the charter, doesn't this go hand-in-hand if we're going to have a department head working with the Board of Selectmen that we need a charter change to accomplish this? Or are we going to just fly in the face of that again?
Don?
I think Michael's absolutely correct. I mean, ultimately, if we do this, you're probably going to have to amend the charter in general because the personnel duties are all delegated in one direction, and there's no mention of anything like this. So it would have to, you know, be altered to do that. But I think we've got plenty of time to be able to put an article together that would support the ability to put this job description out.
So just for clarification, we're talking about, I believe, two separate issues. We're talking about either this HR position, as I was saying, would grow into a stronger position that would report directly to the board. This is set up to report to the town administrator. So this can go forward. And then eventually, if we were going to do that, we would take that action. But for now, if we bring this to this town meeting, this is, the structure is that it would report to the town administrator. And then if we want to move forward with that, that's basically a two-year process.
I think what Michael was concerned about is the word collaborate with the board. How comfortable is the town administrator with that wording? Position reports to you, collaborates with?
Sure, the quick answer is that the town administrator role reports and is appointed by the board. So if you're asking me, I have no problem with that. If you're asking future administrators, my answer would remain the same. The administrator works for the board.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
I just think it poses a question. And for me, from the beginning, it makes absolutely no sense in some of the scenarios that were mentioned to have a human resource person that's going to do exit interviews and everything else that doesn't have the ability to report to the Board of Selectmen. And if we do, we should have a charter change in conjunction with this that allows it. Across the board, Julie, I don't want to get involved in intakes. I don't want to get involved in paperwork and 401Ks and health insurance. But if we're going to have a reporting mechanism to the Board of Selectmen on maybe a problem on the higher levels, shouldn't we have it, and if they're going to work collaboratively with us, a charter change allowing that? That's my question.
So if the word collaborative is sort of the thorn for you, then we can certainly revise it. I see this position as necessary now, and if it's a position that it strengthens going forward for a charter change, that's fine. But ultimately, this gives people a resource, relieves the ATA currently doing all of these items, gives one place to go, gives a streamlining of onboarding and training and all of these other things that are elements of bringing people in and then possibly not having a streamlined approach to all those people getting their benefit information, having one place to go. It doesn't all have to be about complaints. HR is a multitude of things. So to me, this strengthens staff, has one place to go, it alleviates some of the current job load on the ATA. And again, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing this position grow into the position you've described. But I don't want to wait to bring somebody on board that can help staff and better improve the personnel ability for staff on multiple levels. So I would like to see this go forward now, and I wouldn't be adverse to seeing it grow into a stronger position, reporting specifically to the board. But if there's, and this is why we're discussing it, if there's room, you know, for revisions and other ways to get comfortable with it, then let's have that discussion.
I just follow that. It's been brought up by several, and I understand what you're saying. So a kind of human resource department to handle all of the other stuff is fine. I don't want anyone in the public or anyone at home in the public to be misguided, thinking that we are addressing some of the things that they've asked us to address. Because every town that has a human resource department that I've been able to talk to said, if you're looking, or if somebody is looking for a place for people internally to go that may have a problem with administration on any level, not just the town administrator, it's not going to happen, and they don't do it. So I don't want anyone thinking that we're hiring this human resource piece, and it's going to fix what people in the public are saying, that the people have nowhere to go to complain about administration, or maybe even the board. But in general, I don't see how it makes any sense having human resource on those levels sit in administration. levels sit in administration. So I think it's a twofold piece, and I think 90% of the responsibility would fall on administration. But that other 10%, I think we really need to think about, if we're going to do it. I don't see why put a position in place when you could do it all right now, with a charter change at the same time, and hire right now. That's one argument. I have one more, but I'm going to yield if somebody else wants to speak.
Hi.
It's unrelated to, it's back to the Assistant Town Administrator.
Hi, Elizabeth Harder, Harwich. I, to my understanding, because I worked on this with something else once, it doesn't need to be in the charter if a staff member has the ability to go to the select board or whatever the governing body is, if it's a problem, if it's a problem outside the day-to-day workings of their office. So if someone did go to HR and say, "I have a problem with this person in admin," they would be able to go to you, just like if the finance director found out somebody was stealing money, they'd be able to go to you without having to specify it in the charter, because collaboration, I think is the word that's holding you up. But that doesn't mean authority or oversight. It means if they have a problem, they can go directly to you. But I don't think it needs a full charter change for that.
Joe would probably be better at answering this than I am, but that is not how the town Harwich runs in its charter right now. Employees cannot go to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen can't get involved in day-to-day operations, correct?
I believe the language says, you know, without an investigation.
So, can I just ask a follow-up question? In terms of this going forward as a charter change this year, you'd have to have sufficient time for public hearings, be able to have all of those under your belt, and then have a revised final draft for an article. Is that correct, or am I speaking out of turn?
If you, if I'm hearing the board correctly, if you're looking at a charter change through the process we've used most recently, related to water, wastewater commissioners, name change and things like that, it has been an article at town meeting. If adopted by town meeting, it goes to the Attorney General within 10 days for a cursory review. They basically say there's nothing illegal about it. After that blessing from the Attorney General, it then goes to the next year's annual town election.
Right. So it's a basically, not maybe technically a two-year, but it's a year, year and a half.
Cover two calendar years in about a 13-month period.
And so that's my concern, is I would like to see this position in place coming forward. I don't see any reason that we would wait. And I mean, I understand your opinion, but for me, I think it's an important thing to start now. Is there any other discussion, Michael?
And I understand the two years. I would just say that supporting this in conjunction with a charter change, I get that it's going to take two years, makes more sense to me than just doing this on its own and then thinking we're going to bring it back a year from now, or two years from now, or forget, do it five years from now. So I would like to see it in conjunction with a charter change. Approve it now to go before town meeting, but in conjunction with starting the charter change process.
And get it on the slate for, yeah. I'm not opposed to that. I mean, if, you know, in terms of strengthening the position, I just want to emphasize that, you know, HR isn't only, and again, everybody needs a place to go if they have a complaint, so I'm fully supportive of that. But I also just want to point out that HR isn't always about the complaints, so. I don't know, Joe?
I support that. I just, and also, Belt and Suspenders is Assistant Town Administrator's job description when we hired was 50% HR. Clearly, it's way too much. But I brought this up before, I'll bring it up again, because we're going to approve another job description tonight without changing one.
Yeah, we knew to get on that.
So I would like to see a draft of a new job description for our Assistant Town Administrator, which she has plenty to do. But I think it's appropriate, if we're going to add something that already exists somewhere else, to change that. And at the same time, we should, I brought this up before, look at what that individual's being paid and see if it's an appropriate time to change that pay scale for the Assistant Town Administrator.
Agreed. And I did have this on my ongoing list. Right. And I have this on my ongoing list of agenda items, so. Any further discussion? Joe, do you need us to make a motion to move ahead with this and with the charter piece?
It's really the will of the board. I mean, I've heard the discussion, it's on the list for draft articles. I'll make sure there's a companion article, given the charter discussion as well.
Okay. Don?
Yeah, Madam Chair, relative to that, can we, can I make a motion, or I'd like to make a motion, that we, so that Jeff's got something in his hands, that we ask the Charter Bylaw Committee to write a bylaw, a charter change that addresses the fundamental relationship that Michael's talking about?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now you can say whatever, what you need to say.
Thank you. Contracts? Oh, did you want to say something, Mark?
Contracts.
Oh, okay.
You know what? May I go back one real? I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
To your motion and the approval of the positive, I'm going to charter by law to ask them...
Develop a...
To develop language that changes, that supports...
The change.
The Human Resource Director reporting to the Select Board.
Right.
Not the TA.
Not, not across the board, as well as.
Right.
As well as.
As well as. I just want to make sure I have the language right, so I call them right after this meeting.
I understand, Michael, there are situations that routinely don't have to do that, but there are situations that by their very nature have to.
Yeah, I think we need to...
So they're going to report, we'll work on that language in my before I go to charter by law.
They can work on it, too. We're not going to do it in...
No, I understand. I just, okay. Thank you.
So contracts, the vote to approve a contract with Rise Engineering, and the amount of $140,595 to replace the air conditioning unit at the community center.
Second for discussion.
Thank you.
Was that your motion?
Yeah, I read it. Sorry, Jeff.
I was drinking.
She was ready to go, though.
And Mark, did you have some comments?
Just one thing. Mark Keller here, West Howard, just as a resident. I don't have any conflict with this contract, but once I read the agenda packet, the way the 30B, they have an exclusion for energy efficiency projects. Anything under 300,000 can be single-sourced. And I just, it just seemed a little bit funny to me. Maybe Mr. Town Administrator could answer that. If any company, but in this particular case, Rise, writes the engineering report and then does the job, it just seems like that you may not get the best deal. And I would, just a comment, maybe once in a while, go out and get another bid. I mean, $300,000, if a company thinks they've got the inside track, single source, they write the engineering, they can write it to their specs and get the job. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Joe, do you have anything to say on that?
My response would be that working through the Division of Energy Resources and Rise is considered a best practice under the state procurement.
Okay.
So it is fair to say that this procurement in front of you comports with best practices of the Commonwealth.
Great, thank you.
Excuse me.
So I made the motion, it was seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four oh. And then the vote to sign the quitclaim deed for 276 Queen Anne Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I didn't think that was a move.
Well, I'm moving.
I don't like a move.
I'm moving to approve it, and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't, so. Any discussion on that item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four oh.
And just to advise that the closing is scheduled for this Thursday, January 4th.
Great.
And there is a document in there for all of your signatures.
Thank you.
Two for you, just for you.
Okay, thank you. Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, and good evening, Happy New Year, everybody. I have two announcements related to personnel matters. One is a promotion, and one is a hire, and then there's one contract to go through. I'm pleased to announce that Michael Ramirez of our Public Works Division has been promoted to the role of heavy equipment operator. And I have appointed Jonathan Winslow to an open vacancy for heavy equipment operator. So for Mr. Ramirez, the promotion is scheduled to take effect today, and for Mr. Winslow, his start date was today. So we welcome those two gentlemen. I thank the Director, Len Hooper, Chris Nickerson, the Roads Manager, and Brian Alby, who went through the interview process, then connected with our Assistant Town Administrator. So great to have the promotion and great to have the new person on board.
Okay.
And then the contract is relative to the Herring River Ecological Study. I think you folks will recall, I believe it was November 27th, when you had our conservation agent come before you. So this contract is for $72,640. It's covered under Chapter 30B, Supplies and Services. And this contract is awarded to TRC Environmental Corporation, and the purpose is the ecological study of the impact of dependent structures within Herring River. And again, as you folks know, you authorized the use of wetland revolving fund money in addition to funds that were available through town meeting. So good to have that contract in place, and certainly a critical project for our Conservation Department and our Conservation Agent.
Great, thank you.
Other than that, just best wishes to everybody for a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Joe. Don, Select Board members report?
Nothing.
Nothing. Jeff?
Happy New Year.
Michael?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing as well. So we will...
Move to adjourn? Oh, no, we don't adjourn.
You were going into executive.
Recession, go to an executive session.